I'd like to call the meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded. You see that there is no one else recording the meeting, if I'm correct. Please join me in the Fledge of Allegiance. The Fledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic over which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible and every being cast as its crown. Welcome. We now move on to special recognitions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The first one is the annual presentation of our Project 351 student. And with your permission, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Gaggen, who will do the introductions and tell a little bit about why this young lady was selected.
Good evening, members of this school committee and Chairman Scobie. It's my pleasure tonight to come and talk to you about Project 351. As you may recall, Project 351 was started in 2011 within Governor Patrick and continues through today. There are 351 schools that are middle schools across the Commonwealth. And we recognize this day as a day of service. It is done around the Martin Luther King holiday, as Martin Luther King gave a lot of good service to our country. And so, we at the middle school have six or so candidates that are eighth graders that are recommended by their teams, that come to me and usually another person. And we interview them, talk about how they do service in the community. And I'm going to read you a little bit about Effie Fotos. She is our candidate, our ambassador that we're sending forward, and she will be representing us in Boston. Effie best exemplifies the ethic of service through her community participation in many different ways in Auburn. Effie loves to participate in extracurricular activities and athletics, softball being her favorite. Effie has been a member of the Auburn Middle School Student Council and now is an eighth grade student, is the president of our student council. Effie also attends Greek school a few nights a week, which she learns how to speak in Greek and the Greek culture. Last year, Effie volunteered along with her brother and many of her friends and relatives and presented a Greek day during our school, which they engaged in song and dance and their parents brought in traditional Greek food for our students to share in the Greek traditions. Project 51 will give Effie an opportunity to be exposed to new ways which to be involved in community service. And in turn, Effie will hopefully come back and bring some new inspiration to the Auburn community. So I give you Effie Fotos. Effie, this is for you to recognize this honor of being a Project 51 ambassador. Do you have any questions for Effie?
Any questions?
Just like to say congratulations.
Congratulations, yeah.
Yeah, that's quite the honor to be chosen out of all the eighth grade. Wow.
It sounds like you've been very busy. Do you plan on continuing your politics when you get to high school? As far as being class president perhaps, or, yeah, as well as sports? Anything you'd like to tell us about yourself that Mr. Gaggen hasn't covered?
No, I'm pretty sure he covered most.
He covered everything? I thought you might say that. Well, we'd like to give you a round of applause for all your hard work. And thank you very much for coming tonight. Mom, you must be very proud. She's accomplished quite a lot in her young academic career. So thank you for coming.
With just one suggestion through the chair. In the past, sometimes we've invited our Project 351 ambassador to come back and tell us about their day of service and maybe if they have any ideas to bring back to the middle school, if you'd be willing to do that.
That would be excellent. We'd love to have you back.
That'd be great.
And, did your mom, did you have something?
But I guess she's not. She was gonna ask what the school committee was looking for to, for the town. What was a good cause or a project or...
Oh, we have, we have many of them.
But she's so shy again. Mom will do the work, don't worry.
When Effie comes back, we'll consult with each other on the projects that they have there and they give recommendations and kits for the students to have to come back. And we have a few that we are looking to incubate right now at the middle school going forward.
That sounds good, yeah. And if there's not enough, we can always find more. Plenty of good causes. Effie, would you like to come up and shake our hand so we can congratulate you personally?
Have a great time.
Congratulations. Keep up the good work.
Yes, have fun.
Congratulations. Enjoy it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on. That was nice.
The next two recognitions are for teachers within the district. The first one is Hans DeClerc. He's a math teacher at Auburn High School. And he was selected through mass insight education. They've named him a Partners in Excellence Teacher for his work in the AP STEM program. As you know, we have really been including and increasing the number of AP courses that we offer. Mr. DeClerc has certainly been one of those teachers doing that. Important to note is he's one of only 54 Massachusetts AP teachers to be named, so it really is quite an honor. He'll be recognized at the Seaport Hotel down in Boston on April 5th. And we extend our congratulations to him. He does a great job with our students.
Excellent.
The next one is Mrs. Carter, a first grade teacher at Bryn Mawr School. She was nominated by a former student, Danielle Watkins. And this young lady actually happened to be a first grader when I was principal there with Mrs. Carter. And as we learned today in our walkthroughs when we visited the schools, it was actually at Westfield State University, which Mrs. Carter is a graduate of. So they've really created a great program. And students in their education program get to select a teacher. Some selected college professors, others selected elementary, middle, and high school teachers. And it was really quite an award. The students spoke about why the teacher had been so impactful to her. And then Mrs. Carter got an opportunity to share what being an educator meant to her. So a very nice award for her and a great way to be recognized by a student.
That's excellent. That's quite an honor. Any comments? Seeing none. I don't see any citizens' comments either. So we will, I would seek to approve the minutes of December 2nd.
I'll make a motion to approve the December 2nd minutes.
2nd? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This is a vote.
Thank you.
We now move on to the student representatives' report. Jacob?
All right, well, first, I would like to apologize for my past two absences. And I just want to go into a little bit of what we've got going on right now. So we just had finals the past couple of weeks. New trimester has gone off very well. All of our winter sports have started up. And in fact, I think that there's either a game or a meet for all of the sports teams tonight. YAH is actually in the track meet tonight. And I think that everything has been going very smoothly. So, yeah.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you for the report, Jacob. Do you have a note for your absences?
I just, work's been crazy, so...
I'm just kidding. We appreciate it when you do show up. Thank you very much. We now move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Now, the first item, the teacher actually was not able to make it, so we're going to table that until the next meeting. It's not until the springtime. But the Auburn Cultural Council awarded several grants. And I'd like to thank them for their selection. They've actually given away $2,553 in grants, which is really wonderful. And as you can see, in the six grants that they awarded, they're going to impact the schools across the district. So I'd like to recognize the teachers. Mrs. Cherie for a step back in time. Mrs. Cannell for a farm-to-fork project. Mrs. Bailey for Grecian masks. Mrs. Prunia for community tape art mural. And Mrs. Christine Robbins for STEM packaging and design that you saw a little bit of today on our tour. And then at Auburn High School, Ms. Fridella, Ms. Bastian, and Mrs. Hausdorff for a field trip that they're actually going to go. They're actually going on, I think, Friday or is it today? Oh, the 8th it was actually, so last week, to the Boston Museum of Fine Arts. So they awarded, as I said, in total $2,553. So congratulations to them. I did include in here a letter that was sent on behalf of the teachers to the Auburn Cultural Council. And this happens to be a former teacher of ours, our retired teacher who serves in that capacity.
Excellent, very nice. Thank you to our teachers for consistently looking for more funding in creative ways. Much appreciated.
Thank you to the Auburn Cultural Council for continuing to support our goals and communities.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Any other comments? Okay, moving on.
Just to give you a brief update, the Early Literacy Expert Panel that I sit on continues its work. We most recently held a meeting here in our Blue Room. And I think there's a really nice connection with the Best Practice Grant that we've applied for in collaboration with Ms. Jacobson and the Town Hall team. The work that we continue to look at, we're really looking in two different areas in terms of assessments that we're using to identify students as early as possible and trying to bring some consistency to them across the state. What we've learned is there's just a myriad of assessments and we're uncertain as to the effectiveness of what we're collecting. In fact, it also ties in really well with the district leadership work, literacy work that Dr. Lozay is leading. And we're looking at the assessments that we use. Are they measuring what we want them to? And are we able to use the results of them? So our work continues on that. We've not produced a document in a while. We had a couple of breaks in there. But next time we do, I'll bring it back to you and hopefully it will have an impact in the ongoing workings of the Commonwealth, early education. The next item, this has become a tradition to share these things with you, particularly around the holidays, and it's about labeled commitment to the community and examples of giving back. As a district, we so appreciate the support that we receive from the Auburn community. The taxpayers most recently funding the Auburn Middle School, supporting our budget. But we also believe in the schools that it's really important that we likewise give back to the community. We saw evidence of this as we walked around the schools today, whether they were collecting for pajamas for families who may be in need. Schools across the district, we just donated here. We adopted a family through our Youth and Family Services. Others do that as well. We have students who do raking or volunteering, many of the different organizations, really just fine ways to creatively support. And I know it's appreciated, but wanted to be sure you're aware of it too. The next item was what I just referenced. The, an opportunity that was first shared with me through Town Manager Jacobson called Compact Community. It was through the Compact Community Program. So the goal of that program is really to identify best practices in communities across the Commonwealth and hopefully replicate them. So as noted in here, each community has the opportunity to apply for up to three best practice areas. The town is applying for two, namely housing and job creation and retention, and has offered one to the schools on coordination and collaboration of early education. So the idea around this is, and as I noted in the actual Auburn-specific best practice that we're hoping to create, is to really, we currently don't have the capacity in our schools to provide preschool programming for all of our students who would be eligible. Plus, we've got some great programs already established in town. So the idea would be if we can work closely with those schools, both the Head Start Program, private programs, and with the public school, to make sure that we're coordinating our efforts, that anything that we're requiring of our preschool and any assessment that we may use, that they would likewise, we would share those information with them. And perhaps even do, you know, some programming at some point, but just to get us all together. Certainly, it's something that we could do on our own. But the idea of this compact program is they bring in individuals, and in this case, it would likely be people from the Early Education and Care at the Department of Ed, who would come and provide technical assistance and provide information and help us make this come to fruition. So there's no cost to us as a district or the town, but there's potential great benefit. So I just wanted to make you aware. We don't know when we'll hear on this, but as soon as we do, we'll let you know.
Excellent.
Sounds wonderful.
It sure does.
The next item I wanted to share with you, this is a newsletter that Raymar Pagano, the architects from the Auburn Middle School project, circulate widely. And obviously, they're advertising the good work that they have done. But as you can see from this here, they very much featured the Auburn Middle School. This is the view from up on the bridge and looking out onto West Street here, the whole foyer area. And there's also a photo of our students, a smaller one and then one in large when they're using the outdoor classroom area for some of the work that they had done actually through the STEM program. So just wanted to be sure that you were aware of this. Oh, there's a photo actually on the back. They had asked, and I also put a quote in here. And I believe I spoke for the SBC when I stated how pleased we were at their professionalism. They were always on time and very detail-oriented. So, and I think that the entire Auburn community really takes great pride in the final product too.
Absolutely.
The next item, recommending that you deem, you as a school committee need to determine when items are surplus, when they're no longer of useful value to us. So as part of the CIP and work with the town, we've replaced a leg machine. It's in the fitness room. Don't have room or need for the old one. So with you deeming it surplus, we would actually be able to hopefully sell it if possible or at least get it removed from the premises.
I would entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion to deem the old leg machine at the high school as surplus so that it may be sold with any funds received going into the athletic revolving account.
Have a second?
2nd.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. This is a vote.
And then the next item is the Commissioner of Education, Mitchell Chester, recently sent out a press release regarding the 2015 Accountability and Assistance Results. And if you'll note in the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6th paragraph down, it starts with the 45 commendation schools announced today, including four Massachusetts public schools. And the US Department of Education has designated 2015 National Blue Ribbon Schools. Blue Ribbon Schools are recognized in two categories, closing gaps and exemplary high performance. This year, Pachachak Elementary School, as well as a school in Lynn, North Attleboro, and Melrose were all recognized for closing gaps. I know that you knew that, but just wanted to share that it has been shared with superintendents and educational leaders across the district. So great news.
Wow, pretty good run going right now. No complaints. Moving on to unfinished business.
So before you, it should be at your seat. There's actually a memo to me from Business Manager, Mrs. Worsbicki. And we have done work over the past month to six weeks. And that has included certainly our business manager, Dr. Lozay, Mr. Fahey, and myself in particular. And what we've done, and this is what we do each year, is to look at our budget. And as needs change or things arise, we make adjustments to that. So what you see in this memo, if you look on the reverse side of it, the final impact of it is actually a reduction in the request. It looks like this here.
I saw it when you were going by it.
That actually reduces the overall request. It was originally a 3.67% increase from FY16. This new budget, and a copy of which Holdpunch does at your seats as well, now reflects a 3.23% increase. And what's detailed in here are the changes that we have made to this budget. If you remember, you accepted at the last meeting the check from National Grid regarding a rebate. There is some question and we're getting clarification. It will be discussed at SBC on the 22nd. That amount may need to be shared with MSBA, not that they've already received the portion. But in total, it will be about $380,000. But still, we'd be looking at about $170,000, which is significant monies. So the recommendation Mr. Fahey and I have looked at, as well as the others, is that to set that money aside in the revolving account and to use it to offset the contracts for the upkeep of the new equipment. So that would actually result in a $50,000 decrease. The next several items, but for the last one on the first page, actually reflect, we did a reassessment. We had the opportunity to visit the four-year-old preschool full-day program today. Our hope through this budget is to add another classroom and to staff it. With the student tuitions that we would receive, this represents the offset that we could have for that. So it really would have a negligible, if any, impact on the operating budget. So I had just done a miscalculation and when we double-checked it, realized we could use more offsets. So that's a great thing. We also took a look at what we had set aside in the salary reserve to make sure that we had set aside only a value of what may potentially be approved. But also to be sure that there weren't any duplications of people who may have gone into bargaining groups. So that's a reduction there. On the backside actually reflects increases that we needed to make. And as I shared with you before, our special education accounts, and particularly our outer district accounts, are those that are most volatile. Because it's really dependent on student needs and decisions made at team meetings. So overall, what this reflects is actually a reduction of $85,121.07. So it's up to you. You don't need to approve this or vote this tonight at this meeting. Because we have one more meeting before we need to send forward a draft to Town Manager Jacobson. But I just wanted to share this with you and have you understand what we had done. Have you answered any questions?
I'm okay with taking this home and kind of paging through it before the next meeting. Well, this was the, the material was quite clear, yet, you know, so I was going to take another look.
I'm afraid that Jared commands if so, to let the services to it and that because of Celia and the leadership team group, you know, combing through as much as you can so that we get exactly what we need.
Thank you.
It's excellent. It's obviously a lot of thought is put into it throughout the year, but then really it's crunch time and it's, I understand what it's about when it gets to be this time of year. You know, above and beyond everyone's regular responsibilities and then having to put the budget together, just not a lot of fun. So, yeah, much appreciated. So we'll hold off on voting that unless there's any objection. Any further comments? Seeing none.
The School Building Committee will actually meet on the 22nd, so following that, Mr. Page and I can update you.
Excellent. We now move on to new business.
The Safety Advisory Team, I know that we had shared that we had a meeting scheduled back and I believe it was November, or late Oct-, it was November night. It really was sparsely attended, I think is fair to say. So it's important information, so we'll be doing another one on January 11th with an inclement weather date. I won't say the S-word. An inclement weather date of January 25th. So we've already started advertising that in our email notifications in hope that we get a good crowd, because I think the information was well-received and really appreciated by the families who were in attendance that night.
Absolutely.
And I think, again, our Safety Advisory Team, their ongoing work is great.
Wayne?
I've got something on the new business when she's done, or when she is done.
The next item, we were outreach by a member of Town Hall, the departments, that a gentleman from town had put a request into them to potentially purchase parcels of land that abut the Pachachak School. And there's an aerial view map here. Those of us who were there today, you can see that the field extends there. And the actual property line goes much further back. It's tree-lined. So the parcels that they're requesting are those two that are marked in there. My recommendation, the town, according to this document, looks that the sale price was $100 for them. It looks like three potential parcels that were purchased back in 1989, 1991, and 1984. My recommendation to you on this is that we ask the town to not sell those parcels. And the reason being, while there are no immediate plans certainly to do any work to or expansion of the Pachachak School, my concern would be that if these parcels were to be sold, I think it would greatly limit any expansion that could be possible for use by the town or school, by the schools, I should say. So my recommendation would be that we ask the town to not sell those properties for that reason.
I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to request the town not sell the property as it abuts the current Pachachak School and can limit future expansion should there ever be a need for desire to do so.
Do I have a second?
2nd.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Aye. This is a vote.
Thank you. I will share that information with Miriam. The next item is, Mr. Fahey and I have been discussing the use of the facilities. And he happened to be at Swanson Road this past Saturday. And due to the very large crowds of individuals, and it's great that there are so many who are participating in the Auburn Youth Basketball Program, that we require that they hire a district-trained site manager. With that level of students and families who are there, even the parking lot is extremely busy. But obviously, we have an obligation to make sure that the school is ready and clean and appropriate for Monday starting. So it is my recommendation, this is a multi-recommendation, is my recommendation that we require a site manager. And that would be on top of the fee that they're currently paying, which is really to pay for the custodian on a weekend. The next part of that is the Auburn Middle School Gymnasium is also being used on both Saturdays and Sundays. And if you recall back last year, as part of the budget, Mr. Fahey had requested an additional custodian. And the intent was always to have that person, happens to be a gentleman, work on Saturdays and Sundays so that way, knowing that the community would want to use it. So rather than, since someone is already assigned, then we don't need to bring him or her in for overtime, to not charge the $40 an hour rate on Saturday and Sunday, but instead to charge just the site manager rate. But again, to have it be just a trained person who's there just to be sure that everything is maintained properly. So those would be my two recommendations on what to do there.
I would entertain a motion or a couple of motions, if you'd like to do them at once. Well, one at a time we could do them. That's fine. That way we could discuss each. We'll start with the first one.
I'll make a motion to set the hourly rate for renting Auburn Middle School's gym at $15 an hour on the weekends, as long as there is a regularly scheduled custodian on duty.
Do I have a second?
2nd.
Any discussion?
I think very reasonable.
Yeah, it seems like it's, it seems like it's offsetting, which I think is a good, nice gesture to make. And, you know, of course, we need to take care of our facilities. So that's just something that, you know, I hope everyone understands that we're not looking to make a buck off of anyone in town here. If anything, we always do our best to save the town money. So I hope no one takes it that way, even though this is kind of an even deal. Just in general, we're not looking to make money here. We're looking to keep our facilities in the condition that we're used to having them, that's all. And for future generations.
And ultimately save the taxpayers money.
Exactly. And in the long run, you're absolutely right. Any further comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This is a vote. And the second motion, I would entertain that one as well.
I'll make the motion to require the Auburn Youth Basketball pay for a district-trained site manager on Saturdays due to the large crowd and for safety reasons. The fee assessed will be $15 per hour.
Any discussion? I mean, do I have a second? I'm sorry.
2nd.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. This is a vote.
Thank you.
Thank you. And upcoming events?
So our holiday concerts are underway. Actually, the Swanson Grade Four one is tonight. I understand there was a sellout crowd there last night. Pachachak's will be on Monday, Bryn Mawr's on Tuesday. And always a favorite, the Auburn High School Band will do its tour of the schools on the 23rd. Always a fun event.
Excellent. Wayne?
I was going to make a comment on the new business, but...
That's where we are.
Yeah, we're still there.
Upcoming event, okay, well. I just want to let the children and the parents know that we have the Santa Claus Calling Show tomorrow night from 6 to 8. So any children want to talk to Santa or sing a song over the phone or stop down and play an instrument or something, they can call me at 508-832-3581. But to call Santa, the number is 508- But to call Santa, the number is five oh eight, eight three two, fifty-three, twenty-three. And you can let Santa, give Santa some help with all the, uh, presents this year, so give him a call. Thanks.
Excellent. Now, do you know any of the elves that'll be there except for little dolls, though? Just wondering. That's great.
No comment.
Okay. We now move on to teaching and learning report. Dr. Lozay?
Do you mind if I step to the podium?
No, I would love that.
So this evening, I just wanted to take a few minutes of your time and go through some of our PARC results by grade level, and then to also share some highlights, specific highlights throughout the district that our students achieved. Um, as you remember, last year, for the first time, we had all our students take the PARC test, and then we heard initially that scores across the state were down, so we didn't know what to expect. But I did entitle this, A Snapshot of Our Students' Successes, because overall, we're very proud of how Auburn students did in this first administration of PARC. I just wanted to go over a little bit of the scoring for the PARC. The PARC scores on five levels, whereas the MCAS had four rankings, which were, if you remember, advanced, proficient, needs improvement, and warning. PARC now has five levels, with level one being the lowest, which states that a student did not yet meet expectations, moving gradually up to level five, which means that students exceeded the expectations. And what the state did was use a linking process called the equi-percentage linking to take the scores from MCAS, link them to the PARC scores in order to come up with a transitional composite performance index, also known as the TCPI. If you remember from the MCAS at all, there was the CPI. So now, because they're linking, they're calling it a transitional CPI. And that composite performance index is really a scale of zero to a hundred. Based on students' performance, they are awarded a certain amount of, of, uh, points. So the lower-performing students might only earn a, a score of twenty-five, whereas if you have proficient or advanced, you score a hundred points. That's all added together, and then they average it out by the number of students. And so the goal of every district, really, even though we're doing it incrementally, is to have a CPI of a hundred. They also use that same linking system to come up with a transitional median student growth percentile, which in the past was just the median student growth percentile through, uh, MCAS. So what they do here is they look at like students across the Commonwealth with similar profiles and determine what amount of growth those students should make, and then they assign a growth profile based on their achievement. So as we go through this, just to keep in mind that a TMSGP of forty to sixty is considered average, yes, lots of acronyms. So I broke this down by English Language Arts and Math, because those are the areas that we took the PARC, and I broke it down by grade level. I wanted you to see our transitional CPIs. Um, so as you can see, they range from an eighty-nine to a ninety-six point nine, which is pretty, pretty high. Um, our student growth percentiles here are all in the average range. I thought it was also very important to note the percentage of our students that are actually achieving at the level five, which exceeds expectations. I think we can be pretty proud of our students, we have some really significant percentages there. Because we always set the bar high in Auburn. Terms of mathematics, you'll see that we range, again, on our CPIs, a little lower, from seventy up to the ninety-three point one, which is actually in Algebra One, and that's for our grade eight students. We actually administered a Algebra One PARC assessment to one hundred grade eight students, which is huge. And to have them score with a ninety-three point one is really impressive. Um, and two students actually performed at the highest level, which is level five. Some specific highlights across the district, I just wanted to point out a few at different schools. Twelve percent of the JB students in grade three scored at a level five on ELA, that's awesome. Twenty-three percent of the grade four students at PAC last year scored at level five on the ELA. Sixteen percent of the grade students, when you combine JP and PAC, scored at a level five on math. And again, the Algebra One scores, we were extremely impressed with. And when you looked at area districts that we compare ourselves to, Grafton, Shrewsbury, Millbury, our students actually scored higher than them at the grade level for that. And then another, um, important piece to note is that our special education CPI increased at the Auburn Middle School, nine point one points, from sixty-five point nine to seventy-five, which to us is significant with all the work that we're doing around co-teaching and inclusion. So we were very happy about that. Last year, our goal, when we chose to do the PARC, was really to ensure that our students had an opportunity to take this type of next-generation test, so that going forward, they would have that experience to draw on. We feel we were really successful in that goal, and I think we learned really how adaptable our kids are. Based on all of that, districts are awarded accountability levels. Because it was PARC, we were held harmless for that. So these are the same levels as we had last year. Julie Bancroft, level one, PAC, level one, Auburn Middle, level two, and Auburn High, level one. And of course, you know that as a district, it's awarded the same level as the lowest school in the district. So even though I say that, at the same time, I say, when you are going out of a level one through a level five, being the poorest, and we're a level two, we still wanna be a level one, but that's not too bad. It also indicates the amount of help you will get from DESI, which is minimal, because we are so high-performing. So going forward, just to give you some information for the testing, um, in two thousand sixteen, all of our students in grades three to eight will take the PARC once again for ELA in mathematics. They will, we will once again be held harmless for our accountability levels. This year, PARC will have only one testing window, whereas last year, they had two, so they're kinda consolidating that, which is good for our students. And again, we have chosen to do it completely electronically, unless a student has an IUP and calls for something different. We continue to administer science MCAS in grades five and eight, that has not changed. And again, they're going to hold the MCAS as the competency determination at grade ten, at least until two thousand nineteen. And some of our next steps that we continue to work on and think about, because even though we think we did a nice job, we know that our students can continue to improve. So we really believe that the work we're doing that Dr. Brunel talked about around our District Literacy Action Plan will help us really refine and target more students, so that our schools in ELA will also improve, and especially in terms of our special ed students. We wanna sustain and expand co-teaching, because I think we're starting to see some benefits to that. We wanna continue to fully implement our new math programs. We know that at the elementary, this is the first year, but at the middle school, it's only the second year for the implementation of the Big Ideas Program, and there's still work to be done around that. We believe that if we expand our focus on STEM, that gets at a lot of critical thinking and higher-level, um, thinking, so we wanna really expand that and have our student, students see the coordination of all those areas. We wanna, we've done a lot of work within the schools around professional learning communities, where our teachers come together and they actually share what they're doing in their classrooms, they look at da- data and they can compare. Well, your kids did really well on this, what are you doing? So we think if we expand upon that and share some more best and promising practices, that the toolboxes of our, all of our teachers will continue to increase. And then finally, we're going to prepare our students for MCAS two point O. But I think we've seen that our students are, are really adaptable, as well as our teachers. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those for you.
Any questions, comments? Dale?
Kathy, since they're holding us harmless with the next several years.
Yeah.
Are they still using those scores to label our district level one, level two, or we, or is that score reflect back to a different period in time?
They are keeping the data.
Mm-hmm.
But they hold us harmless for the levels that they assign us.
Okay.
So when we get to two thousand eighteen or two thousand nineteen, when they do assign a level, it, it actually takes into consideration, um, the PPI, which you'd need another whole presentation on, which I'm happy to, but that's actually four years of data, so it will be using the current data that we have.
So the middle school would remain a level two for the next four years or so, because then I...
Or they could become a level one, which is our goal.
In between?
Yes.
Oh, they are using data now to come up with...
You can't come down, you could go up.
Right, exactly.
You could go up.
You can go up, you can go down.
Oh, okay, I was just wondering if we were just gonna be labeled that way
No.
till they make up their mind or something.
No, that was a good question.
Yeah, you can't, you can't improve, they can't develop.
Okay.
Yes, yeah.
Now, um, this kinda goes back to when I was teaching, there were certain areas that we always worked on to bring us out of level two at the middle school, and they explained that that was because one of the first times all the students came together. Um, are you still focusing on certain areas, and has there been improvement in those areas?
Absolutely, they continue to look at the item analysis and the strands and all of that testing. Um, their math, what they've done this year, so their math, too, really focuses in on where we're weak. And then they also have an enrichment block at the middle school, which actually gives every content area an additional time during the week or the six-day rotation to take that information from the targeted areas, weak areas, and target their kids. So they do additional teaching, they do some small group around that, they might pre-teach something that they know was more difficult last year, so it gives their students multiple opportunities to interact with it, so they are working on it.
Good.
Continually.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Kathy, th- that, that program that you speak of at, at the middle school, is that a pull-out program, is that, um, an after-school thing?
The enrichment?
Yes.
The enrichment block, no, it's not pull-out. Um, it's actually an extension of the content time, so the regular content teacher who has the background in that content has looked at the data and is targeting her own students. She may have additional support in the classroom at that time, there may be a special educator in there, an inclusion IA or a math para to help.
And at the lower levels, we have something similar, some type of mediation?
Absolutely, um, at the low levels, it's called an intervention block, and they have it for ELA and mathematics. And again, it's mostly push-in, occasionally, just because of space, small groups might be pulled to another setting, and we're using all the personnel we have in the building to target those students.
Excellent.
If you don't wanna reach out.
Thank you for the presentation.
You're welcome.
Very well done.
Thanks.
Moving on. Professional managers.
Give a brief overview of the October eighth day, or... I think the agenda is in your packet. It was our most recent half-day. I think if you look through it quickly, you'll see that
Yes, it's here.
the focus for the elementary is once again the GoMap. They did a lot of work on that and the technology piece. Um, at the middle school, they did some data review, they also did a lot of work with their iPads, and they used experts within their own building to share out practices and apps that they use. We do have, I think I spoke to you in the past, about the English Language Proficiency statewide tests that we'll have to take, which is this year new electronically. So we had a lot of our ELO tutors work on the training for that. Um, at the high school, they did some data review, we have report card work. Um, we had some ABA training by James, who is our BCBA. And our team chairs are preparing for the mid-cycle review, which I believe is this coming Monday. We'll have a visit from DESI, so a lot of different individualized kinds of work, but it was a successful day overall.
Very successful.
Excellent, thank you. Any comments? Thanks for each of those reports. Uh, moving on to policies.
Two policies that you reviewed and approved on first reading, it is my recommendation, purchasing authority and bidding requirements that you approved on second reading.
I would entertain a motion to approve these policies on second reading.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, there's a vote. And we do need to briefly go into executive session?
We do, yes, please.
I would entertain that motion. Oh, Wayne?
Just before we go in, could I, uh, I'd like to make a little statement about today, we did a walkthrough through schools, and I was very impressed on the way the schools were being run, and how they work together from the lower grades all the way up to the high school, how they work together to make the, um, schools as good as they are. And, you know, when you're at budget time and you get a chance to really go up front and really see what they're doing, and the new programs that they're doing, and how well they're doing, and I'd like to say thank you to all the principals, all the team leaders, everybody involved with it. And I was just very impressed with, what I saw today, and I know a few committee members might wanna say something, but I think they were very impressed, too, and I just wanted to say that, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, any further comments?
Great, it was a really positive day, was a day to be proud, you couldn't really use a school spell a smile on your face.
Excellent.
All good things.
Anyone else? Well, I'm sorry that I missed it, it sounds like, um, I missed quite a bit, but I know that our schools run like, um, well-oiled machines, and again, as Wayne said, thanks to leadership, and thanks to our teachers, and everyone who, who helps to keep our children safe and keep our buildings safe, thank you.
And the children looked so happy and so involved in everything they were doing today, everywhere.
They, they were told to act that way from their teachers before you guys showed up.
It was an awesome day, it really was.
Is that light? Light was going up in the corner.
Now I would entertain that motion for executive session.
Oh, I'll make a motion, per Mass General Law, Chapter thirty, Section twenty-one A two, to conduct strategies for negotiations with union and non-union personnel to enter into executive session.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Mrs. Harrington?
Yes.
Mrs. Coughlin?
Yes.
Mrs. Holloway?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Mr. Scoop?
Yes. There's a vote, good night, everyone.